Good evening and welcome to the meeting for the Merrimack School District, SAU 26 School Board for November 6th, 2023. I'd ask that you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I have my pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we proceed, I just want to recognize that Board Member Hardy is excused tonight. And we will move on to public participation. If you wish to address the board this evening, we ask that you please step to the mic, state your name and address for the record. And if you are a student, there is no need to state your address, just your name. And so we open the mic to public participation. Seeing no one, we will move on to recognitions.
I want to mention the names of several students. I want to mention the name of several students who we will actually be recognizing with certificates at an upcoming meeting. And these are students who are from Merrimack High School, and they were accepted into Jazz Allstate, which is quite an accomplishment. And we oftentimes talk about athletic accomplishments, and we will be recognizing a soccer team at an upcoming meeting also. But these students have performed exceptionally well. And the Honest Jazz Band, Trey Grant and Hikari McDowell. Trey plays lead trumpet, and Hikari first alto saxophone. And we hope that someday she's a member of Tower of Power, as Ken enjoys. Honest Jazz Choir is Julia Hodgson, soprano voice, and the Jazz Choir, Adalina Carmelin, alto voice, Shaila and Sasha, soprano voice, and Rachel Yasevich, soprano voice. We congratulate them because that is quite an accomplishment. As I said, we will be providing them with a certificate in person here at an upcoming meeting.
Great. Thank you. We will move on to informational updates.
Well, we have a, we had a program review of various components of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act of 1965, Title I, II, III, and IV. I want to thank Amy and Sue Lors, Marsh McGill, and Lanay Foran for the extraordinary amount of work that they did. I know Amy, let's see, you were still at work at what, 6 o'clock, 6:30 on Friday?
Let's not talk about it.
Friday. But that shows the dedication that has been devoted to it. Just a reminder, and I'm sure Amy will be saying something about this, so we have an early release day coming up this Thursday. And as you know, Friday is when we celebrate Veterans Day. And I'm sure you'll join, join me also in thanking all of the veterans for the extraordinary commitment and valor and courage that they have displayed and continue to display. And we thank them very much for their contributions to serving our country. We had an excellent strategic plan meeting, our first meeting, back about a week and a half ago. We have another meeting coming up this Wednesday evening from 5:30 to 7:30. That will take place at Merrimack High School Library. Matt and Amy and Melissa and Sarah Reinhardt, Director of Student Services, and Sarah Plato, Director of Student Wellness and Student Staff Wellness, have pretty much completed our meetings with the staff, our listening sessions with them in terms of what they see as important needs of the system, based on data, both quantitative and anecdotal data about our students. You know, as we've said to all of them, if we want to know how to improve the Merrimack School District, we're not going to read it out of a textbook. We're going to talk to the staff to understand what's working and what we need to do a better job at. The last group I think we met with was the Librarians late last week, and they had some excellent suggestions. And it was very nice comment that they made to Amy and Matt and Melissa and others and myself, that one of them said, you know, I've been here 17 years, and it's the first time someone has asked me my opinion about what's working, what's not working. So it pays dividends. We want to stay connected with the staff. We want them to be connected with us. And we want them to feel comfortable sharing with us their thoughts and opinions. We have been very active this year also in the school safety training. I want to thank Detective Bill Van der Slade from the Merrimack Police Department for really coordinating those activities for us, and our school resource officer. We completed the bus evacuations, which are very important and mandated by law. And moving on, I want to congratulate the Tech Ed students at the Merrimack Middle School. Teacher Debbie Rapsom has indicated that, and I'll explain the significance of this, they've completed their Dragster races in the Tech Ed program. And the winners are Michael Munus, Mason, Nana Maka, Dayton, Mungavon in HC and 8D, Sean Lister, Abbott Davis, and Sadie Taylor in 8G, Lucas Martinez, Jack Anderson, and Josh Lynn Haynes. It's a Dragster race, but it's a lesson in minimizing air resistance, some lesson in friction. So there are various concepts of physics built into the lesson, and I have several pictures. They had a fabulous time and did a wonderful job in learning different concepts of science and physics in particular. The Merrimack, excuse me, the Middle School Drama Club, Becky Thompson has submitted something that the students have been working very hard in the production of "The Bugs," which will be performed on November 17th and 18th. And everyone has been working very hard. We hope that is a very successful performance. The Master Call Elementary School has indicated that there will be about 100 people at their Title I Open House, and we congratulate them. In fact, that is now past tense. So there were about 100 people, which is really quite a turnout, and we congratulate them for that. From Nicole Rowland from the high school, her creative cooking class, "An Introduction to Food." They're making, the students are making and donating 100 loaves of pumpkin bread to the St. James Food Pantry for their Thanksgiving breakfast baskets. Once again, an example of great staff with wonderful students doing very important things to contribute to the community as a whole. And so we congratulate them. The students at the middle school also, Christine Blaine Cone has organized a card drive for students to thank our veterans and active service members. The cards are being collected soon and sent to Thanks a Million organization, and just as appreciation of all of the contributions that veterans have made. We have just a couple more things from Carol Judres. The student, the schools as a whole participated in a very interesting exercise, a reflection and a very deep thought process that involved both students and staff. It aligned with the Responsive Classroom program. And we had, they had two school assemblies where students and both students and staff talked about their expectations for appropriate behavior and support of each other. And so that's kind of unique in terms of my, what I've experienced in this profession over many years. And so I congratulate the students and the staff at Master Call Elementary School for engaging in that activity. It's a wonderful, wonderful experience. Sarah Campbell, as you know, one of the best in Merrimack, has announced that the Quiz Bowl team, consisting of eight students, vied recently for the place on the statewide tournament. The team out of 10 competitions went nine and one and won the tournament. And will be heading on to the state tournament at a later date. She has done an outstanding job with the students. And so congratulations to Sarah and the students. The Merrimack Middle School Girls Soccer Team won the Tri-County Association Championship in a score of 2 to nothing, defeating Ross Alugio. And the 7th grader, Zo Cola, I hope I'm pronouncing Zoe Cola, won the New Hampshire Middle School Cross Country Championship. It's the first time ever that a female athlete has won this for the Merrimack Middle School. And so we congratulate her for her accomplishments. And let's see, we have Melanie Bedard has qualified for the third year to compete in the New Hampshire Cross Country Meet of Champions from high school. She's a student at the high school. We congratulate her. And, you know, I was talking last week to a couple of staff members about some of the changes in the curriculum that we have, and many initiated by Amy. And one of the students, one of the teachers made an interesting comment about mystery science. And if I can read this to you, it says, "Mr. Olson, this is Rebecca Lassard, a 3rd grade teacher at Thornton's Ferry. I wanted to share how amazing," and she put that in all caps, "the mystery science lessons have been for my students. I've had a 100% engagement for each and every lesson we have completed, and our conversations have been so rich and thoughtful. Each lesson contains thoughtful talking points and allows for students to demonstrate their learning in different ways. At our team meetings, our whole team has shared similar experience. This was an excellent purchase and commitment that our district made to help ensure consistency of teaching and learning across the elementary schools. It doesn't get any better than that." And that's all I have for you for tonight.
Thank you, Bill. I got it. Excuse me, as I'm slowly losing my voice here. That would be great. One moment. I blame my kid. He got me a little sick. I have it in good authority that the Merrimack community showed up big time for that soccer game. And I believe it was in Bedford, and Merrimack outnumbered Bedford like 3 to 1. So it was just great to see our community show up for our Middle School Girls team. Congratulations to them. Moving on to Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Update.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. As Bill mentioned, we had an onsite visit by the DOE today. About a dozen or so of their consultants came to look through all of our federal title grants. As he also mentioned, it was a tremendous amount of work. We had to wheel carts over of folders and documents and be on hand to answer any of their questions. He did thank quite a few people, and I just want to add to that list. Sue Lors, who's our federal funds bookkeeper, you may know her. She's been in the district 32 years?
Forty, forty.
Okay. Whatever, whatever Matt says. Leanna Ford, Lanay Foran, she's my administrative assistant. She does a ton of work related to Title II, Title I, and all of the documentation. Marsha McGill, our Title I project manager, Jane Revanel. Jody Hanley, who's our homeless liaison. We, for the first time, were audited for McKinney Ventos specifically, so that was new for us. And Jody's been our homeless liaison for a long time, and she's extremely knowledgeable. And then our Title III team, which is our ELL learners, our ESOL teachers, so Sagita Clifford, Jess Klubel Black, never say her name right, and Marina Garova. We really had an all hands on deck for this onsite. We're looking forward to responding to the, we already have a report for them, from them. They give you an opportunity to provide further clarification the day of and then the day after. And then we have about six months to do corrective action. So as Bill and I met with them today, you know, we just let them know that we were happy, actually, that they were here, looking forward to their feedback because we do want to follow the rules. We want to get it right. And they were, it was actually really pleasant, I would say. It was a lot of work, but they asked thoughtful questions. So, you know, just nice to have that in the rearview mirror. Also, just want to let you know that our iReady webinar that I mentioned at the last meeting was a big success. We had about 125 people register for the webinar. Our panel consisted of all the building principals that are currently using iReady. And then we also had a teacher from JMEWS that came to talk about how she's using the data and the individualized learning paths in her classroom. We had a lot of great questions from parents and families. And if anyone missed the webinar, there's a recording of it posted on the district website. So if you want to go back and hear the questions or hear any of the information, it's posted there. I want to take a minute to congratulate our new Director of Wellness, Sarah Perata. She was successful in securing a second round of funding under the promising New Futures Grant for the district. And those funds will go to mostly the middle school to work on restorative practices. So she's really excited to get that work started. And Principal Bozeman and Assistant Principal Hoppa, they are really excited about that too. And as Bill mentioned, we do have a two-hour early release coming up on Thursday. During that time, our staff will be completing a mix of mandatory and recommended training on a variety of health topics. So they will have some online training and then some Q and A with the nurses. And we will cover things like bloodborne pathogens. They'll do the Stop the Bleed training. I don't know how familiar you are with that, but that has to be done. We'll look at AED and Narcan training, administering EpiPens, and then asthma and seizures. And we are hopeful that our teachers and staff in K through 6 will also have some time to complete their initial DESSA screeners. Sarah Perata talked about the DESSA at her previous meeting. So we just want to take the time to thank our families. We know that two-hour early release can sometimes be tricky for schedules, so we're appreciative of the time.
Great. Thank you, Amy. Moving on to Assistant Superintendent for Business Update.
Thank you very much. As the superintendent mentioned, we've been getting budgets in from the various schools based upon the discussions and our meetings with them and the staff. I have resisted the urge to look at the bottom line yet, so it's going to be a surprise to me and you at the same, not probably at the same time, I'll know before you. But we're putting that information together. This week, the high school is going to have a walkthrough by the Fire Department for inspection purposes. It's a standard thing, happens to all the schools. And they're also going to come by Central Office and then Special Services. So they're going to do a walkthrough of both of those buildings. I'm not sure if Captain, the Fire Marshal, John Manuel is going to be with him as he is retiring at the end of the month. I just want to say a special thank you to him. It's been a pleasure working with John all these years, and we all wish him the best. He's been a very valuable resource for the Merrimack School District and for the community at large, and he certainly will be missed. But I'm sure there are other capable people that are in the Fire Department that are going to pick up right where he left off. So just want to give you a heads up that that is going to be happening, and we'll have the results or an overview or however it's going to be formatted, you know, shortly after the inspections are done. And we'll share that with the board. That's about it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Moving on to School Board update. Not much to update on. We're going to hear a great deal about our, one of our biggest initiatives this year. We're going to talk about tonight about the new Central Office Building discussion. So we look forward to those conversations as well. And then just want to kind of echo what Mr. Olson had said earlier about just recognizing Veterans Day coming up on behalf of the board. Just wanted to say thank you to all of the veterans in our community and beyond. You don't get recognized enough for what you've done for us. And if you are not a veteran, please make a point on Saturday, the official holiday, to say thank you because we don't do enough for them as it is. Moving on to Student Representative update.
Good evening, everyone. Recently, we had this event called Battle of the Bowls from Playables, which sells acai bowls, smoothie bowls, smoothies, et cetera. And guess, oh, it's...
Hello, hello?
Perfect. There you go. All right, from the beginning. Recently, we had this event called Battle of the Bowls from Playables, which sells acai bowls, smoothie bowls, smoothies, et cetera. And guess what? We won. Our school won a free Playable day today. The first 25 students were able to get a free Playable, and the rest had a 25% off on a Playable. The competition was for other schools, including ours, to compete on who would have the most students buying Playables and showing their ID cards. Sadly, the free day was only for today. I would have loved to have given an update earlier about it, but the winner was just announced last Wednesday. Other than that, this school year has definitely been busier, especially with the new schedule. Having last lunch as a student is quite horrendous. And a lot of students that have last lunch, I bet, can agree with me on that one. But most importantly, students are excited to have a half-day on Thursday and a day off on Friday. That's about it for my update. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to old business and the Central Office Building Discussion. And we have a guest here tonight who's going to be kind of walking us through it, Mr. Rich Hendricks.
He's been at this for a lot, how many years?
His hair was black when we started this, so, kind of like mine was, you know?
Well, I gave a speech to the seniors' center about 13 years ago, and now I could actually join it.
Rich, just so you know, I've got two graphics if you want. They're not up yet. We've got the rendition of the SAU office, and we have the potential site plan, so people can see that. So if you want those up there, we can just, just let Justin know, and he'll do that for you.
Okay. And new faces on the board too. My name is Rich Hendricks, and I have been the chair for the Planning and Building Committee at least for the past 12 years. Been on the committee for 14 to 16 years, so I appreciate this opportunity. Actually, the Planning and Building Committee is not only myself. I should state Shane Albuquerque, Michael Alloconis, Tim Groff, Finley Rothaus, and our vice chair, Gage Perry, is working on this as well. It is with great anticipation and excitement that I come before you to go over what we think, kind of direction of how to propose the district's, district's Central Office Building. I make a note at our meeting on September 25th, the Planning and Building Committee gave this board a firm recommendation to go ahead and pursue and put it up for a vote on this new building come April of 2024. Frankly, I'm excited to have a board that has the foresight and support and the budget circumstances that Matt can go over to finally give the many employees of this district working in these current buildings, we refer to as the Green Building, which is right now the administration offices, and a Blue Building across the street from it, which houses our special services. There are six people located in the Blue Building, and I believe it's 13 in the Green Building. And we appreciate the support and a very involved Chief Educational Officer, Bill, too. It's great to have a collective group of people. What these buildings don't have: safety, security, confidentiality of conversations. It does not have space to have room for people to come in, even to talk to the superintendent, or certainly have any meeting, staff meetings of any kind. District meetings are usually held off-site at a cost to the taxpayers. And will be designed, the future building, what we will do is make it, the meeting space available to the public as well. We have made our priority, the students, as always. But we can no longer ignore the safety of all our employees. The expectation employee has should be a safe and secure environment. We don't think that that happens today. Lori alluded to, how many times have I appeared before many boards? The date of this particular binder was a report on the consolidation of the SAU and special education offices. It was approved October 25th, 2010. And this book contains years and years of going before previous boards, presentations, data, finances, you name it. I've got some old photos of here and suchnot. So let me go through a quick history of the project because one of the first concerns is going to be, why now? Why wasn't this built years ago? How has this cost risen so dramatically, to be blunt? What's, what makes it different now? We did vote on the project once in April of 2013. Because it is a bond, it does need 60% approval. We got 52% to pass. It was never put on the ballot again. It was never even seriously discussed and put on a ballot by another board. An agreement to that was also by the superintendent, as well as the board's not putting it on. We totally agree that during the COVID years, you had things to discuss in a way that put this building on the back burner. In fact, I don't think we even had a meeting as a committee for a year and a half. So we're obviously taking those years out. It has remained on the capital improvement plan every year, and it was on the capital improvement plan about 10 years before this book was first written. So it's been kicked around for years. It was put off and put out every year. We have no authority to put it on the ballot. It must come from the school board. How are we going to help you present this to the voters, is why I'm here. Quite honestly, it was our feeling after the first vote, when this building was voted on, that too much was actually put on the committee to go out and into the public and do presentations of why this was needed, why was it necessary. Honestly, some people felt the school board really didn't give much of a commitment to it. I, somewhere in this book, I have a list of the 14 presentations I made alone that year. Everything from planning boards to senior citizen committees to the, so you need a bonding hearing and things of that nature. Today, we have the benefit of many outlets to inform people, educate and discuss the urgent need for this new building. So what we'd like to start with is we'll make some videos. The next, actually, a couple of weeks, we're going to start them. And we're going to do it kind of showing the various stages of this idea. We want to show the voters the inside of the buildings. We want to show and explain why a three-bedroom ranch house built in 1958 that our administration team is currently located in is not safe, it's not secure, it's not ADA compliant. There are no confidential meetings or places within their walls. Anybody who has a conversation in that building, everyone in that building can hear the entire conversation, well, from your, your point of view. Later, we'll explain the exact building details more fully, explain why this location is now ideal, and why we don't have to take down the skate park to do it. We're going to show how the spades, the meeting spaces are needed by the staff, and then for the public, how they will be able to use them on off-hours. Finally, we'll give an overview of the layout of the proposed building, which I can touch on a little bit right now, and how the area surrounding it will be the eventual tearing down of the green and blue buildings once the Central Office is occupied. At that point, we'll likely have our own little Q and A section along with the school board. As long as the school board, you'll have had comments and questions from the public, as will we, and we can put those on and kind of communicate that way. So. I mean, there are eight positions now that didn't even exist eight years ago. So you talk about the growth and needing of a building. I've got capital improvement plans, like I say, going back to 2010 with this on it. So we just, we just feel that we want to be a cooperative partner. Our videos that we do make will have our name and your name on them. You'll be given a copy to, you know, what we've come up with and endorse it and change it wherever you see fit. It has to be both parties, not just us. And I think that was, like I said before, that was a kind of mistake, and we got so excited by it, but we didn't realize the school board just kind of sat there. And that can't happen again. So that's kind of a quick overview of what we're thinking of doing in the next couple, two, three months. Any questions?
Go ahead, Lori.
I agree with you. It shouldn't be just on the planning board. This board, this group, minus Board Member Jenna, who is part of it, we've gone out and pounded the pavement for our teacher contract, for everything that this board has put up, and we are committed to this project for all the reasons you've mentioned. And so many of us have already reached out since we brought this to the public in our last board meeting and have begun that process to get the word out. Because we all know people have things at 6:00 PM on Monday night, and they don't watch everything that happens at the board meeting. But we definitely want to get it out there on social media and on our website. And the videos, I think, are going to be fabulous, kind of that preview of a walkthrough, virtual walkthrough in those... Kind of that preview of a walkthrough, virtual walkthrough, and those kinds of things, I think, will be very, very helpful for everyone to see.
I mean, we do have, I mean, we do have the advantage of the social medias. We've got the town websites. We have just plain out YouTube, you know, login, central office, Merrimack, however we put it up. What is kind of neat, the videos, what we're hoping for is to have student participation. We have a videography class, so let's take advantage of it. We can make this a real life, you know, actually see their work being used, you know, not just in theory, but in, you know, this is how we were going to go about presenting something. So we look forward to working with the videography once Matt gets, you know, I get cleared with teachers and things. So, yeah, we're just excited to have a board that, you know, as they say, the buck stops somewhere, and prices aren't going down.
Can we put the pictures up? That are up there?
Let me, let's start with the first one here. This is, it is a sketch. This is not a final absolute determination. Matt is still coming in with some of the quotes. But what it does is it gives you an idea. It gives you an idea of the offices that are needed. Yeah, give me a minute, because I gotta be able to look at this. You know, offices like Title One funds didn't agree twenty years ago, technical officers and all the associated, I mean, we did not even have internet twenty years and think, you know, this is how kids learn. You know, homeschooling, you know, there's a hundred and thirty kids. Twenty years ago, people said, I I send my kids to school for my own sanity, much less I'm going to teach them. So, you know, there's just been a whole different change and revolution and ways people are educated.
Yeah, we didn't have, now we have a central registrar's office. So that makes one-stop shopping easier for parents who have kids in multiple locations. And so, you know, we have that. We took the only conference room we kind of almost had access to, which was the the room in special services, and we turned that into an office with a waiting room, so parents could do one-stop registration for their kids. And so far, I've heard nothing but positive comments about the the ease, the easiness and the whole process being much simpler as opposed to trilipsing from Reed's Ferry to the upper elementary school to the middle school and the high school, if you've got four kids evenly spaced apart like that. So it's a lot of, you know, this is also, we didn't have a director of student wellness also. That's another position that's there. The tech position, tech director, you know, is housed in the library. We need the tech director house and central office. There's a lot of stuff that's in here that wasn't there before. So it was a means to kind of put all that together and then get to a square footage amount, still with the basement. We did add an elevator in there, so if people want to bring boxes downstairs to the storage room, that they don't have to carry them down the stairs. I know I could probably do that twenty years ago, but I couldn't. I can't do that now. So there's a lot of enhancements there, plus the fourteen hundred square foot conference room, which I've been talking with Nick LaValle and Justin about having the capability of doing live feeds from there, you know, board meetings, let's have them over there in our own spot. And I'm going to be working with Nick to kind of flesh that out as we get closer to what his needs are and what equipment do we have to to get in that in that area. So this is a schematic of what it is potentially going to look like. It's not an architectural drawing. It's kind of what we started off when we built the middle school. And we did that by design-build. This is probably going to be that same process. We don't have enough time nor the money to have a full set of architecturals done with mechanicals and electricals and HVACs and everything like that. So this is what we're going off of, and this is what we're getting pricing on right now. And there it is kind of laid out in one instance, but there's another drawing that Rich pulled up before, which shows how it's going to lay out. Yeah, that one. See that big, what color is A? Is that blue or purple? I need an accommodation right now. So, yeah, the A is the footprint of the central office on the site of the former Brentwood Building, which this board was kind enough to allow us to remove over the summertime. And one can see how it fits nicely on that site. And it doesn't encroach on the property lines like the Brentwood Building did, was six inches off the property owner's line, which was illegal, but I'm sure was grandfathered in at some point in time. And now we show in the green B and A, B and C. That's central office in the blue house. What's going to happen next is VHB is going to take those two buildings, assume they are gone, and they're going to draw a brand-new traffic pattern. If those turn into parking or parent pickup areas or something like that, they're working on that right now. But the previous rendition of this was done before the decision to take Brentwood was put forward. So, you know, there was a lot of stuff going on that is now that wasn't back then. So this is pretty much how things are perhaps going to look. But that's going to be developed over the course of putting this together for final, final construction bidding. So that's just to look at it.
You mentioned elevators. To be specific, when you look at the green and the blue buildings, neither has an elevator. Neither is wheelchair accessible. Half the staff is in the downstairs part of the green building. And we can't accommodate a handicap person in twenty twenty-three. In the downstairs of the blue building, definitely can we not accommodate ADA people? We can't accommodate average human beings. The mold down there is so severe, it is actually off limits. Staff is not permitted to go down there. Alls we did is open the little bifold door that separates it from the top floor. And I thought I should probably get an X-ray on my lungs. This is, this is unacceptable. So I didn't go over to a lot of specifics, but those two, you know, are as bad as you can get to not accommodate an entire ADA specification has a lot of people irritated.
Go ahead, Lori.
So, welcome. I just, I had the privilege to serve on the planning and building committee for probably twenty years. Ten years ago, when we put the first building forward, the same things that Rich talked about tonight, those were the same points that we tried to get out to the public. Our number one point was safety, and there's, safety comes in a lot of different layers when you look at those buildings. You know, physical safety, and then safety, just trying to get out if there was a situation, there's one way to the basement. And we have some of our major district employees working in a basement. So I was very frustrated being on the planning and building committee that we didn't bring it back forward. Now, I think it's beyond time to educate our public about this need and the importance of this building. I will say that the school board is a hundred percent behind this project, and we want to work with the building and planning committee. We will line up with you. If you're going to a PTA meeting, you're going to the Striker Club or the Football Club, and you want us to come with you, we will be there. You know, one of the things that we talked about last meeting is, you know, forming an ad hoc committee that would also be supportive to get people to also beware of the needs and then to also help us. So we can get, our timeline is very short, and, and, you know, we haven't been out there for two years trying to get this project passed, but we want it to get passed in April, so it's all hands on deck. And so, again, thank you for all that you do. Thank all the members of the committee. I know you've been at this for a very long time, and thank you for your presentation tonight. It was thoughtful, and it was detailed. And now we just need to get the word out.
It might have been a syntax error, but I want to clarify one thing. We brought it up to the board many times. It was the boards that did not go forward. I can, somewhere here, there's a twenty seventeen and a twenty nineteen proposal to these boards. So it got to the point where they wanted more information. I mean, I don't know how much more to give you folks. What Lori just echoed was, you know, nothing's improved. We still can't hire ADA people that have a wheelchair that want to be, you know, in the downstairs. We have downstairs we can't even use due to a flood. So we have been activated, and you talk about frustration. You know, some administration said, well, not this year. Some of the boards said, well, you know, I don't want to be on my watch. So to sit in front of, you know, five, six people and be totally for it and want to see, you know, all our employees in a secure, safe, friendly, confidential environment, you know, we've got some pretty, you know, if you think you're, obviously, we can't hear the person on the phone talking, but we can hear what Bill is saying. We can hear Matt and the contractors, so we can hear, you know, a parent that's irate and trying to explain to them why your kid needs a punishment, whatever they've done. So the time, I can't thank you guys enough for putting this up. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
And, and I just want to point out, too, when, you know, the conference room, how important that room is, because we, we have no space in this district to host or have people. So when the new committee, the ad hoc committee meets, there's no space for them to meet. So you're going to have the building and planning committee, and it's going to be evidence right there when you get a room full of people, and there's not enough chairs, and there are not enough space to even have a public meeting that we can try to come together to sell this project.
Having a public meeting about building that doesn't have enough space for the people doing it don't have enough space.
Go ahead, Bill.
First of all, Rich, thank you to you and the planning and building committee for being so supportive. And thank you to all of you. A couple of quick points is we're looking for a building that is functional. You know, sometimes municipalities build facilities that are testimonials to architectural creativity, lots of dead space for heating and what, that's not this building. We're just looking for something that is functional and useful. And the other important component for the taxpayer to realize is, as Matt has said repeatedly in the past, we have debt service and debt retirement associated with the middle school that is expiring. And so we could fit the cost of the principal and interest associated with this building right within and perhaps less than the current appropriation, so that there will be no incremental increase beyond that. And Matt, correct me, please correct me if I'm wrong, but that's, that's an important consideration, I think.
Yeah, I remember back in the day, you know, my mantra used to be in twenty twenty-three, we will be debt-free. You know, that was, this year was the last year we paid for the middle school. So this eight hundred thousand dollars in bonded debt that whoosh goes away for twenty-four, twenty-five. So if you want to float a bond for like, let's say fifteen years or something like that, you're actually going to spend way less than eight hundred thousand dollars a year. Your first year in interest payment could be around a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and then maybe you're looking at maybe half a million dollars a year. It all depends what the price comes in. I have talked with the bond bank, the Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank, and I have secured the services informally of a bond council, which we need, and everything like that. So we do have some preliminaries based upon some of the estimates we've we've gotten from right now. But we don't want to release those because we don't have all the data in right yet. But all we can say with confidence is, when this goes for a bond, it's going to be less than what we're currently paying for bonded debt. There's no two ways about it.
Can I say that even clearer? This will not raise your tax bill from what you're already paying.
Absolutely.
I think that might be the most important takeaway tonight. Thank you again, just for everything you've done for this town for years. And this great information that, you know, I've only been on the board for a little less than two years, and I didn't, I wasn't even aware of these previous conversations, but I already knew we needed a new building just by walking in the building. I think anybody who has ever entered that building can see immediately how just it's not an office building. It's a house. It's literally a house. As Bill said, this new building that we're talking about, I mean, we're going to have all of our district leadership under one roof for the first time ever, ever. And that alone should just, if that doesn't encourage you, if you have a kid in the school, if that doesn't encourage you to to want this to move ahead, then I don't know what does. There was never a moment the five members on this board debated this. There was never a moment where we had this, it was instantly like, yes, of course, we need this. So you have the complete support of everybody up here. We want to support you. We think the next step is to get that buy-in, right, buy-in from our town. And I think the ad hoc committee will help with that. I think going to these meetings, and as Lori said, we are available. Let us know what we can do to help this, because we're not going to sit idly by and let this not pass again. We want this to pass. We're very motivated to get that done. So, so thank you. All right. Moving on to new business. We have a couple of memos of understanding between the Merrimack School District and the Merrimack Teachers Association, some updated language to add to the contract that we need to vote on tonight. And we thought two of the architects behind our latest contract could kind of lead us through here, starting with the long-term substitute positions with certified staff agreement.
So prior to the contract negotiation for the MTA, we recognized that the shortage of subs due to COVID needed to have a solution. We had teachers covering classes without extra pay, so we had already made allowances to pay forty dollars an hour or forty dollars a class for those kind of situations. However, the concern is that when we need long-term subs, we have certified teachers who are taking on more than just covering a class for a day. They're taking on the lesson prep, the differentiation, the grading, the conferences. It is their class for a longer period of time, and we recognized that our subpay really was not justified in those situations, and that they deserved one-fifth of their daily rate of pay. And so our memorandum of agreement will put that into place for those kind of situations. If it's more than fifteen consecutive school days, then they will be issued a notice of special agreement and will receive additional compensation calculated in accordance with the first paragraph and retroactive to the first day of their assignment. We just want to recognize that our certified teachers, when they take on a long-term subposition, it's a lot more work than just doing another teacher's lesson plans. And so we want to compensate them fairly.
So do I have a motion to accept?
So I will make a motion that we accept the memorandum of agreement for the MTA agreement for the substitute pay.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes four zero zero. Abstention? No, we don't need that. All right, our second memo of understanding, Lori's going to take us through the certain retirement incentives for eligible teachers.
So this is just to have a formal application process for teachers that are going to apply for the retirement incentive that they have to do it on November fifteenth. It just says how the application needs to be filled out and how it can be delivered to the superintendent. It's just a more formal process, and it's for us, I think it's a good way for our HR department to have instead of just, you know, emailing with, you know, this is my intent, there's actual paperwork. So I think it's an important step.
We have a motion to accept the retirement incentives for eligible teachers MOU?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it again.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes four zero zero. And we thank our teachers for all that they do. All right, moving on to school board two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five budget meeting dates.
Well, we're just presenting to you the schedule as it exists right now of the various budget meetings. It will be very busy next two months. As you see, our first budget meeting with you is scheduled for December fourth. Then we have one on December eleventh, December eighteenth, January second, and January eighth. We have tentatively blocked off January sixteenth. If that meeting is needed, hopefully it won't be, because on the very next evening, we begin a meeting with the budget committee. Now, what we're still waiting on is the Secretary of State to provide us with the primary election date. date. Not sure of that as of right now. And so the, this schedule with the budget committee could change. But Sandy has done an excellent job, Sandy Swanson, my administrative assistant, in detailing the various budget meetings, who will be appearing before you. What we're going to do this year with the budget committee also is we're going to do in the initial meeting, an overview, kind of provide the framework to the budget committee so that there is some context to what is being presented to them by the various budget managers. We think that will be very helpful. We've talked to Naomi Schoenfeld, who is the chair of the budget committee. She's very much in favor of that. We, Matt and I, and if Amy is available, we'll, we're going to have another meeting with Naomi this Thursday to provide some more details and kind of finish off the planning process of what our meetings and what the liaison meetings will look like with our various staff. So a busy time coming up, but a productive time. We've had all of our meetings, as I said, with our budget managers, with the staff. We have lots of input tomorrow morning. As a matter of fact, we have a meeting at 10 o'clock every Tuesday morning for about two hours, the central office staff. Tomorrow morning, we're going to put together our notes on what we have heard from the principals, assistant principals, budget people with budget authority and with the staff to strike our priorities, where we need to devote some additional attention in the 2025 budget and start to solidify our planning so that we present to you and present to the budget committee, a budget that represents the priorities, represents the needs of students and staff in the best manner that we possibly can. And that will ultimately be presented to the deliberative session. So I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Go ahead, Lori.
I don't mean to throw a wrench into things, but is there any way we could get that January 2nd move, meeting moved into December somewhere? I, I'm concerned about having it on the 2nd.
We, we can try. Not sure yet. I don't have a definitive answer for you, but we'll, we'll take a look at that.
And if you can't, you can. I totally understand. I just, I'm thinking holidays the day before. And I, I just, especially with student services and tech being on there, those are two really important presentations.
Yes, and we, we hear you. The one thing we did say to the administrative team is don't, don't have any wild New Year's celebrations because you may be meeting that following evening.
And thank, thank you again for being so diligent and meeting with our, our teachers and our administrators too. I know I've, I've heard firsthand how much they truly appreciate it. They feel heard. They feel like their needs are being listened to and that really does go a long way. So thank you for putting in the time, especially it's a lot of meetings, a lot of meetings for sure. Any other questions from the board? Moving on. Security action for educators grant application for 2023, Mr. Matt Cheminelle.
Thank you. This is an application for safety and security measures that we can put in for, provided by the Department of Education. You may have seen some articles in the newspaper online or whoever buys the newspaper, that's fine. You can buy the newspaper. I haven't bought one in a long time, anyway. And so it's been, it's been in the press that there's $10 million for schools for safety and security measures. Last time we applied for this, we got $120,000 for some safety, security measures. And this time where you're going to apply, we have applied for $388,000 and some change. It's going to take maybe a couple of months before we find out if the award is going to be what we applied for. This grant application opened Monday at 10:00 AM, last Monday at 10:00 AM. I found out through making a couple of phone calls to the DOE that it was awarded on a first come, first served basis. So I was all ready to go Monday at 10, 9:58, I'm hitting that button. It's still not working, you know, to apply for this grant.
Is this like your version of Taylor Swift tickets?
Yes, it is. That's exactly what it is. And, you know, I'm getting nervous and it's, so we had them all written up. You had to reply for a grant for each school. So let's say you're applying for security cameras for one school and you, you wanted for the entire district. So you had to go in and, and actually fill out six different applications for security cameras. Then if you wanted lock sets or something else and you wanted them for each school, you had to go, so I had to fill out 12 different grant applications on a first come, first served basis. But we got money in the first round, so that's a little ding against us whether or not we'll get money in this round. But it was one of those things where it's kind of like, there's no need base, there's no whatever. It's just, hey, just open the gate, Kentucky Derby time, horses take off and see if you can, first out of the gate gets the dough. So hopefully we'll be having some good news if we do have an award. This time it'll have to be approved by the, by the school board. And I need an attestation from the chief of police that we have gone through, you know, certain protocols and whatnot in order to, to obtain this money. But that, that's something we can work on. But just for your information of upcoming events that hopefully I'll have good news in the future. So.
Great.
That's it.
That's great news, Matt.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Lori.
So I just want to say thank you for your due diligence on this. I think anytime that there is an opportunity to apply for grants and, and I know it's a lot of work and it's a lot of paperwork and it's a lot of attention to detail. So thank you for doing this work for us.
And then as Amy would testify today, she was put through the wringer pretty good, weren't you, with the audit that you had, correct? Yeah. So there's a lot of after work too with those. So, yeah.
Yeah, grants are, they're, they're great when you get them, but they're a lot of work to get them. They're not easy. It's hard to get that money sometimes. Thank you, Matt. Moving on to review of principal job description with Amy Doyle.
There should be three role, role descriptions, two in your packet and then one at your seat tonight. And so we're bringing forth a school principal and assistant principal role description, and then a separate role description just for the high school principal. And you'll notice mostly that's related to his supervision and evaluation responsibilities, as well as some additional responsibilities related to athletics. So we're happy to take questions. I can circle back with Melissa and you'll be voting on these at a later date.
Go ahead, Lori.
So, um, so I, I think, thank you for doing all this work. I, my only thing is on the assistant principal where it's a minimum of three years working at a certified educator. I, I just personally, I think even five years is not enough time. You know, when you're a new teacher, I think sometimes it takes up to 10 years before you fully grow and understand just the art and science of teaching. So I would just like the board to talk about three years versus five years as an assistant principal in education.
I, I agree. I, I think back to my first three years as a teacher and I am horrified by what happened. It was, it was rough. And so I wasn't, I, I couldn't imagine being in charge of a building or being in assistance to being in charge of the building at that time because I could barely run my own classroom. So I, I'm in agreement. I think five is a good, it's a, it's a good number because you've been in the system long enough now. You've communicated with parents. You've had those tough decisions with teachers and students. You've had the successes and the not so successes. So I, I think five's a good number.
I have a question though.
Yeah.
It says five on the principal description. So I'm not going to weigh in on whether, what's an appropriate number because I, I don't have an opinion on that. But if we're, if we strongly feel that assistant principal is five, does that mean principal needs to be more as well?
I don't think so because we have the additional leadership requirement for principal. So they have to, you know, served in some educational leadership position, whether department head or assistant principal or those kinds of things, which adds that extra layer of experience and years on top of that five years.
Yeah, I think.
Sounds good.
I think Lori, yeah, that you have, in order to be principal, we have, we expect you to have done some kind of leadership role prior to.
Yeah. So that extra experience I was concerned about is in there, just different.
Yep.
And I agree. I like the five years. I think three, same thing, three years, I still felt like I didn't know what I was doing. And now I'm in my eighth year and I feel much more confident as a teacher. So I think five is a good, especially since our assistant principals do handle a lot of the discipline. And I think that five years gives you the experience of how to balance, you know, grace and truth well with students.
Yeah. And I, and that's a huge piece of it. The assistant principal is talking, you deal with community. You're, you're talking to a lot of parents, dealing with a lot of students, a lot of emotions, things like that. And I just think you need to have a little bit of experience, just a little bit more of experience under your belt. So. Go ahead, Sean.
I will excuse myself from the meeting. It's already like seven o'clock, but I appreciate everything you guys do. Okay?
Thanks, Sean.
I'll see you guys.
Yeah. Beyond that, any other questions regarding these job descriptions? I think that was the only one I noticed. Great. Thank you, Amy. All right. Moving on, grade level reorganization study for Mr. Olson.
About a year and a half ago, I presented to you a report on residential development. And I want to thank a couple of town departments for providing that information to me. At that time, we were looking at the construction of about 70 housing units in Mastacola District, about 161. But keep in mind, some of these are apartments in Thornton's Ferry and 110 at Reed's Ferry. And those developments are and will continue to have an impact on our enrollment. At the present time, both Thornton's Ferry and Reed's Ferry are stressed in terms of numbers of students in relation to the available space. And we will be looking at alternatives in terms of how we can make sure that every student has an appropriate space, not only for classroom learning, but we also provide ancillary classroom spaces for special services to students in, in each of our buildings. What I'm not talking about here is, is redistricting, moving students, you know, from one school district that they are currently attending to another. What we are looking at though, is putting together a, a study committee to look at the possibility of grade, some grade level reorganization, allowing students to continue to remain in their current school districts, but maybe reconfiguring what grades exist in our respective elementary and middle schools. And so, you know, there's a lot of research that has been conducted over the years that shows that grade level reorganization and grade level, different grade level configurations, particularly at the elementary level, don't have a significant difference on achievement levels of students. Most of the research has focused on should, should grade six be an elementary grade or should it be a middle school grade? And so what we're going to be doing is conducting a study, how we can relieve the pressure at our elementary buildings and make sure that we have enough space for the foreseeable future without the need for any new school construction. So hopefully we'll be presenting a, now we will be presenting a report to you before the end of the year. Now, the important thing for our parents to realize is whatever we present to you, if you take some action on it, will not be in effect until the 2025, 2026 school year. Because whatever we present to you, if you approve our recommendations, we, we are going to use a year to appropriately budget for any changes that might be necessary in our facilities. But we also want to do a road show with each respective group of parents in, in the buildings to make sure that everyone is, is clearly informed of what the intent is, the rationale behind it, and how it will impact students, families and our staff, which we hope will be very minimal. But to do nothing, in my estimation, is, is not an alternative right now. You know, we have Chestnut Hill, which is located in, in, or near the middle school, some, some quite significant homes, still very much under construction. Some of them are being occupied. That will impact Mastacola Elementary School. But Mastacola at the present time has a little bit of capacity. Thornton's Ferry and Reed's Ferry does not. So that's our intent. I hope you'll be supportive of it. We'll have a report for you towards the end of the school year and we'll be glad to discuss it with you.
Go ahead, Lori.
I was just going to say, I think this is an excellent idea. It's transparency. It's research-based. It gives people a chance to, to look at the vision of our school district. And I know our decisions are always based on what's the best interest of our students and families. So I think this is a great investigative study.
You know, what makes it important also, if I might interject for one second, is during the budget process, I'm going to present you with some, some graphs because I like things to be more visual than tabular in nature. And I think you'll be able to see that our enrollment, although there has been some decline over the last 10 years, is remaining relatively strong right now, particularly at the elementary level. And so we don't see any precipitous drop in enrollments at the elementary level. And so what that says to us is the, the crunch in capacity, particularly at two of our elementary schools, is, is not going to diminish anytime soon. And, you know, Matt and I have done a six-year average cohort survival ratio. Some, some people and I, and I like this term also better than cohort survival, it's the cohort progression ratio is relatively strong. You know, the, the ratio between birth and kindergarten indicates certainly an in-migration of families, which means more students are enrolling in kindergarten, five years after the births that occur in town. But that's always, that's always an unknown. And, and the least reliable, least valid estimate that demographers make, the, the transition, the cohort progression ratio between kindergarten and grade one tends to be over one, 1.0, because some students go to private, private kindergartens. After that, it has remained, based on our calculations, relatively consistent, almost 1.0 cohort progression ratio. So we'll continue to provide you with those numbers. We're going to talk about that during the budget deliberations with you and the, and the budget committee and the town voters at the deliberative session. But we want to make sure that you're informed every step of the way because we can't get caught, caught short of space because when we make decisions at the last minute, they become expensive decisions. And so that's what we want to avoid.
It's an excellent way of looking at it for sure. Go, sorry, go ahead, Amy.
Can I just say I appreciate how proactive you're being about this? And I appreciate too, the, the level of involvement of like bringing in the, the, the town folks too, and the, and keeping an eye on all the buildings that are going up. And it's, it's good to know that we're planning. Like you said, the last minute decisions are not the kind of decisions we want to be making. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to update on strategic plan. We're going to stick with you, Bill.
Just very briefly, Amy and I wanted to give you a brief update. We had, as I said, our first meeting about a week and a half ago. We have an agenda. I've included the agenda for that meeting and the agenda for this week's meeting in your packet. We had a very lively conversation. There will always be some meetings where we won't have full attendance. That is life, life of very busy people. But Mark Dolan from the New Hampshire School Boards Association did an excellent job in facilitating the meeting. He's keeping us focused and on task. We have an assignment that I'm going to get cracking on personally for Wednesday night and then all of the other committee members. But it was a very good conversation. You know, your first meeting that's convened of everything, you're not quite sure who's going to speak up and, and be involved and engaged. But it was great, great session. And we're looking forward to this meeting, this week's meeting. Amy, I don't know if you want to make any comment about it?
I just want to thank everyone that's joined this committee. It's a great representation of different stakeholder groups. And we have had to move the meeting now three times. We were supposed to be at J Muse, too small. Then we moved to the middle school and the library, too small. And so now we're going to try the high school library. So we'll put out some breadcrumbs to try to get people there. If you've ever been to the library, it's on the second floor, but we'll be there to ensure people get to where they need to be.
Great. All right. Well, thank you so much. And last official item under new business, fiscal update of residential development.
I was contacted several weeks ago about a company that is based both in Port Arthur, New Hampshire and, and New York. Company called Urbanomics. The state of New Hampshire has contracted with them. To do a study of the fiscal impact of various types of resident residential developments. To a school and municipal budgets. Also that they will helping us, help us understand the impact on enrollments. And so I have agreed to participate in that study. There are about twenty to twenty-five other. Communities in New Hampshire that will be participating with Urbanomics. Familiar with these types of studies. They can't hurt. They provide valuable information for us as school officials, but also as municipal officials. To understand the economic impact of the various types of residential developments. You know, we have various single-family. Homes of three or four bedrooms for the most part. We have various types of condominium developments, lots of apartments in Merrimack and. You know, people tend to think that, well, apartments won't have any impact on the schools. Will they? They do. Because for some people, that's the. Least expensive way to get into a very nice community with a very good school system. But also there is a secondary impact of apartment buildings in that some empty nesters in a community. May decide to sell off their home, move to a less labor-intensive, maintenance-intensive. Environment in an apartment and those homes are reoccupied by school-aged families. And so there is some impact also. This is a firm that is skilled in this type of study and we're looking forward to working with them and hope you'll be supportive of it.
And I assume this information would help with the grade level reorganization conversation as well, right? This would be. Pretty useful bit of information on that. Is there a timeline for this info that they would?
I don't have a definitive timeline. They're just getting started. I know they've already contacted the. Assessors department in town for some information. They'll be meeting with us for demographic information and. Once I know more clearly what the timeline is, I'll certainly let you know.
Thank you. All right, any other new business? Okeydoke, moving on to policies. We're, we're back to policies. It's been a little while. We have a couple here that we will be potentially waiving the first reading of unless there's discussion. Just to remind folks, we do have a couple of policies that are still being updated. There was several edits made to. Dress code, revised use of physical restraint, seclusion and public participation. We're still kind of working through all those. So those will be back. Those have not been formally. Adopted yet, but they will be in the near future. So.
Can I say one thing about that?
Yes, please.
One of our discussions was on the, on this restraint and seclusion was. The co-regulator and the language there. I just walked through that with the DOE last week. So I have some clarification to send to Sandy on how to re, how to word that section and where it best fits.
I'm sure she would love that.
There, there has been. Thank you for that because I was at a superintendent's meeting, regional superintendent's meeting about a week and a half ago. And there were quite a few questions with respect to, is it, is the person supposed to be in the presence of the child at all times or intermittently? And so. Look forward to that, that clarification.
Oh, go ahead, Bill.
May I just say on, on the policies? All of these are, are necessary. I reviewed them with our director of student services, Sarah Reinhardt. The policy with respect to evaluation requirements is, is very important because we want to make sure that. Outside evaluations are done with integrity. Okay, and. Focus on content that is both valid and reliable, research-based. And so. Between that policy and the other two on the specific learning disability policies and developmental delay policies. All of, all three policies will ensure that we are in compliance with all IDEA, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. And then Hampshire education, special education standards.
Great. Opening up her discussion, if any.
Are they, are they new policies? Did we not have something about this on the books before?
They are, to my knowledge, they're new, new policies.
Well, I think I found a typo and I said Naomi's going to be so proud of me. Just a small one on line nine of IHBAA, and I, I think I'm reading this right, evaluated consistently as opposed to consistent.
That's funny. I have that one.
I knew you would.
I was actually, I, I actually have a list of questions about that one because you could word that a bunch of different ways and have ever so slightly different meanings. It reads. The district will ensure that all evaluation requirements for children with learning disabilities are evaluated consistent with applicable state and federal laws. Is the word evaluated meant to be in there at all? Is it meant to be administered or applied or met?
Evaluated, and I think the, I think the.
So, so are we, we're talking about evaluating our evaluations, our evaluations?
Yes, and I think the word consistent is, is the correct word.
Darn it. Right.
I'll send an email because I'm, I'm confused, but that.
I'll send an email.
So these are all frustrating. So the, you know, the, you have time to make comments. If you would send them to Sandy and the public will have time to make comments. But we generally have a motion to waive the first reading of.
I make a motion to waive the first reading of these three policies.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Aye, four zero zero will waive the first reading. Please check them out on the website. If you're watching from home, give us your feedback. Let us know what you think.
Thank you for your thoughtful comments that you're going to submit.
All right, moving on to approval of minutes from the October sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, public and non-public.
I make a motion to approve the October sixteen, twenty twenty-three, public and non-public minutes.
Second from Lori Peters. All those in favor?
Aye.
No, you were not at that one. So that's abstentions. There we go. All three, zero, one. Approval of minutes from the October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, non-public minutes. So I'll make a motion to approve the October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, non-public minutes.
I second.
All those in favor? Aye, four zero zero. Thank you very much. Moving on to consent agenda.
There is one resignation in your packet tonight. Kimberly Morgan, middle school science teacher, has resigned her position effective November ninth.
All right, moving on to other committee reports. Go ahead, Lori.
So the building and planning committee, I was able to go to their meeting. Matt actually let them have a tour of the. SAU building, the current SAU building. And then after they had a planning session on how they're going to roll out the new central office. I will say that I, you know, I think it's really important for the planning and building committee to understand that. We have high confidence in them. We know they've worked many, many, many years. Doing the right thing for, for the town of Merrimack and our community. The ad hoc committee that we are forming. Is just to get more people involved and, and to support the project. But we definitely have a lot of confidence in the planning and building committee.
Go ahead, Naomi.
I went to a budget committee meeting on October seventeenth. Where they basically talked about, they went over the same schedule that we went over tonight and they talked about. The budget process and who did what and. Then, and they talked about like their. Their parameters for like how they want, plan to operate as a committee. And I went to a parks and recreation committee meeting. I'm looking for the date in my calendar and not seeing it. They. Talked about that they're starting their budget process and the slides at Kids Cove are fixed. That was cool. And they did a whole bunch. There's new mulch and on the playgrounds and. They talked about the Halloween party, but that's passed and. Coming up, there's the tree lighting and I can't remember what date that's going to be on in December, but that's the other thing that might be of interest. So I will circle back with that.
I heard, I, I don't know if this is true or not because it came from my kid. It does, is the after-school Natta Cook program being extended?
Yes, that they did. They mentioned that, they mentioned that as well. I, I'm disorganized today. I didn't grab that piece of paper when I was stacking my notes together. They are, they. They've had good success with it from Thornton's and they're extending it to kids at Master Cola as well. Because there's, there's reasons why they were able to do that that have to do with the cost of busing. But, but yeah, so if folks have kids at Master Cola and they're looking for after-school care, they've got a few openings and they'll do. They'll do part-time. You don't have to do it every day of the week. And you pick them up right at Natta Cook or Westerman Park. So the same place Camp Natta Cook is.
All right. Thank you. I was able to attend my first curriculum instruction. And what's the letter A assessment? Yes. Committee meeting back on, I think, October seventeenth was the date. It was great. Just getting to listen. Amy ran the meeting. It went really, really well. Listening to teachers kind of talk about curriculum updates, what, where the needs are, what's going well. So it was, it was very cool. I'm interested in continuing with that. And we have another meeting coming up. I think in a week or two. That sounds right. Yep. There you go. Thank you. And then we also had a professional development. Committee coming up this week, I think this Wednesday. Thank you. See, I'm glad Amy's here. She keeps me in track. So yes, we have another meeting coming up this Wednesday. We'll have some information to share about that at our next board meeting. Any other committee reports? Go ahead, Naomi.
I have one thing I want to add to my parks and rec one. Am I able to say with certainty that the skate park is there indefinitely? Do we have any other plans for that space? Is that too loaded a question to bring up right now?
Is everybody looking at me? Well, the, the plan, I mean, that is our property. Obviously we have switched gears and we're not going to be considering that for. Central office anymore. As we have now taken over the, the Brentwood site and cleared that off. It's up to the board what they would like to do with that piece of property. I'd like to personally give. Look in the future to, to put some pavement there, to maybe put some parking lots there for the people to watch the. The games across the way through the fence, but as far as the skate park being there. That's a board decision. I mean, I've talked with the town manager about it and they have no immediate plans. And, you know. This is two thousand eighteen that we, the land reverted back to us. So it's been a while since that skate park has been there. On our property past the term of the agreement, so. I didn't hear any plans immediately for replacement of that, so.
I was just curious. It came up. They'd heard through the grapevine that we weren't planning on using the, the space for the central office anymore.
Oh, so that just let the pressure off and let's just leave it there.
Yeah, and, and, and I, I didn't want to say, yes, you can have it forever because I don't know that that's actually the.
I don't think we can convey land to another entity without a vote. Of the legislative body, kind of like when we gave the fire department permission to build on three acres of land across from. Thornton's Ferry Elementary School, of which we own thirteen acres of land with a curb cut on Continental Boulevard. We did that years ago. That was a special meeting. That was a warrant article. So we just can't say you can, well, it can be a gentleman's agreement, but you can pull that back at any time. That, that's not really worth anything. But if legally you want to convey land, it would have to be with a warrant article.
Okay, so right now it's in limbo a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, moving on to correspondence. I did have a couple of folks email me with some concerns about teachers and, and. Students, so I said, sent them up the chain of command, sent them to superintendent and hopefully. Their concerns were taken care of. Go ahead, Lori.
So I had two correspondents. One, I directed the question to Matt Shavino. The other correspondent I had. Ed Garrity, I think he graduated from Merrimack High School in nineteen eighty-eight. He was the football captain. He's a national speaker and author, and he sent me a copy of his new book. It's about inspiration, leadership and finding your way in the world. It's called Shine Your Light. I think it's a great book because he talks about his childhood, growing up at Merrimack, Merrimack High School, the lessons he learned in Merrimack. And how those lessons continue to give him a lot of confidence as he goes out in the world and inspires. Hundreds of thousands of people with his work as a motivational speaker. And he actually got a start being a motivational speaker. Merrimack was playing Lunanderry in the football finals and it was the coldest day in the world and we were at Lunanderry. And at halftime, he gave the inspirational speech and the team came out. And they weren't supposed to win and they won the championship. And that was one of his first opportunities to motivate and inspire. And then he went to UNH and he continued that pathway. So I think he's, he's a proud Merrimack graduate and he's making his way in the world.
He gave the keynote speech at when it kind of its graduation last year. Yeah, yeah. He's a, he's a rite of passage at my school that I teach at because all freshmen, he comes and speaks to all the freshmen there. And so it's like, everybody's got to see Ed Garrity at some point at our school, so.
So I, I will bring the book to give to you because I, I really, he's, he's really something.
I didn't know he was from Merrimack. I've known him forever, but not from Merrimack. So that's very cool. Any other correspondence? Comments?
I just want to add on to what Bill said earlier and Ken. I was an Air Force brat. I was an Air Force wife. I'm an Air Force mom and now I'm an Army mother-in-law. And I just want to thank all of our veterans and those who have served and are currently serving, along with their families who serve behind the scenes with them. Thank you.
Well said. Moving on to public comments on agenda items. I don't see anybody here, so we're going to skip that part. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second from Lori Roth House. All those in favor? Aye, four zero zero. Thanks, everybody, and have a great night.